Good evening to everybody, our guests here. I'm Matt Harbin, Mayor Pro Tem. I'm standing in for Terrence Roberts, and I'm certainly sure I won't do the outstanding job that our mayor does. Tonight, I will have the invocation, and Councilman Kyle Newton will have respects to the flag. Please rise. Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for letting us live in a free country. I pray for our fire, our police, our first responders, that you would protect each of them in our city and nationwide. I pray for each team member in our city that represents our citizens. You would bless each one of them. I pray for this council, that you would help us make wise decisions, steering our city forward, and continue to bless our great city and bless our citizens. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On our agenda tonight, starting out, we have two proclamations for Fair Housing Month and Community Development Block Grant Week. And so if I could, could I get Mr. Cunningham to come up? And we've got two proclamations to talk about tonight. Thank you, Mr. Cunningham, for coming down. And we also have two of our staff members here, David Tilly and Mary Jones. Thank you for representing our city and our citizens. And so with that, I'm going to read two proclamations. And the mayor does such a fantastic job with this, Michael. I'm certainly sure that, hopefully, I can do the job that he does. Whereas the month of April is recognized throughout these United States of America as Fair Housing Month, and whereas Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 has amended set forth a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familial identity status, or disability, and whereas housing is a critical component of family and community health and stability, and whereas both state and federal offices of the Department of Housing and Urban Development continue their efforts to promote and educate as many citizens as possible about everyone's right to equal opportunities in housing, ensuring that all Americans have the opportunity to achieve their American dream of homeownership. And whereas the City of Anderson continues to affirmatively further fair housing for its citizens, therefore, I, Terrence V. Roberts, Mayor of the City of Anderson, South Carolina, along with my fellow council members of the City Council, do hereby proclaim April 23 to be Fair Housing Month in the City of Anderson, South Carolina, for the significance of fair housing to our way of life, and encourage all citizens to observe and support both the letter and the spirit of fair housing law as an expression of the individual rights guaranteed by the United States Constitution and the Constitution of the State of South Carolina on this 10th day of April 2023. So that's your first one, Mr. Cunningham. And I have one more. Whereas the week of April 10 through the 14th has been designated as National Community Development Week by National Community Development Association to celebrate the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investments Partnership Program, and whereas the CDBG program provides annual funding and flexibility to local communities to provide decent, safe, and affordable housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunities for low and moderate income people, and whereas the HOME program provides funding to local communities to create decent, safe, and affordable housing opportunities for low-income persons. Nationally, over 1 million units of affordable housing have been completed using HOME funds. And whereas the following activities have been funded: owner-occupied housing rehabilitation assistance, homeownership assistance to first-time homebuyers, public services including the promotion of fair housing, in addition to economic development by providing loans to small businesses and microenterprises. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Anderson designates the week of April 10 through the 14th as National Community Development Week in support of these two valuable programs that have made a tremendous contributions to the viability of housing stock, infrastructure, public service, and economic vitality of our community. Be it further resolved that our community urges Congress and the administration to recognize this standing work done by locally and nationally by the CDBG and HOME by supporting increased fundings for both programs for fiscal year 2023. Signed this day, Terrence V. Roberts. Thank you, Mr. Cunningham.
May I say a few words? I'm shooting you.
I will. Mayor Pro Tem, Harbin, and Councilmen, first, thank you for these two outstanding -- oh, okay. Turn around this way. Got it. I wasn't sure where the camera was, so, all right. And I don't know if there's a good angle for me, but, all right. So just a couple of things. First, let me thank the City of Anderson for their longstanding support of fair housing and the Community Development Block Grant Program. In these two proclamations, you hear, one, a focus on equality of access and opportunity, and then the second one, a focus on how you actually make the assets available so that people, when they have equality of access and opportunity, can actually have the resources and the stock of housing that they need to make use of that. And so those are two critically important things for continuing to grow and build upon a very healthy and livable community. And so the City of Anderson, over a number of years, has demonstrated that support for those two things, access and opportunity. And then, Mayor Pro Tem Harbin, you mentioned two staff members that are here. They do great work, and a lot of people will say, well, yes, we have a commitment to these things, but they don't put the staff resources toward it. But the City of Anderson is different because they have done that, and they've done that for years. So we want to thank you on behalf of the Community Housing Resource Board and of this community for your longstanding support to both fair housing and the available options that come to your citizens when you make good use of those CDBG funds. So thank you very much for your time and attention tonight, and for your longstanding support of these two very important initiatives.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So the minutes of our March 27 meeting have been distributed. Is there any questions or concerns?
I'll move to the adopted second then.
We have a first by Mr. Loffridge and a second by Mr. Roberts. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Our first order of old business is to request second reading of ordinance 23-3, authorizing and directing the City of Anderson to enter a governmental agreement relating to South Carolina Local Revenue Services to participate in one or more local revenue service programs to execute and deliver one or more participant program supplements in matters relating thereto. Mr. Strickland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. What you have before you, as you mentioned, is a second reading of an ordinance, ordinance 23-03, to reauthorize the city to enter these agreements. Municipal Association for years has collected these monies on behalf of the city. This is to reauthorize that agreement. No additional fees, no new fees associated with this agreement. Our chief financial officer, Margaret Martin, will provide some background with this ordinance.
Thank you. So, yes, this is really a rebranding of the Municipal Services Collection Program. They have rebranded it, the Local Revenue Services, and so all of our agreements that we have on record with them have to be redone with the new name. So this is really more of a rebranding. We did discuss this at our last meeting on March 27, and so we're requesting a second and final approval of this ordinance to continue our agreement with the Municipal Association's Local Revenue Service Program.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Are there any questions? I know we discussed it at the last council meeting and talked about some different questions that we had. Anybody got any further questions?
Make a motion that we approve ordinance 2303 on the second and final reading.
Second. I have a first by Mr. Stewart and a second by Dr. Thompson. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Our second order of old business is to request consideration of a contract for IT managed services and cybersecurity. So, Mr. Strickland, I can imagine Mr. Cunningham will be --
He will. But as you, before he dives into this, let me remind you guys, last time, we delayed action on this, if you recall, in our previous council meeting, so we could get some more information on our submittal. And so Mark Cunningham, our IT director, is here to provide some background and a good recommendation to you guys.
Thank you, Andrew. So, yeah, we're back again. The last time, the day of the meeting, we discovered some information. We interviewed two finalists for this contract, and during those interviews, we went over the things that we needed these companies to handle for us. One of these being our backups, our onsite and offsite backups are currently done by a company called Dato. Dato does not bill us directly. They bill our managed service provider, who then sends that on to us. So when the one group that we were prepared to move forward with, we discovered that they didn't include that. That was a significant increase in the cost that they were going to charge us. So we went back, asked both of the finalists, we redid the interviews, we had the first company come back and do a re-quote that included the backup prices. So when they did that, their costs were significantly higher. Also, whenever we met with Sharp Business Systems, again, we did discover that they offered some added features that we weren't aware of at the time. The first company, the E-Group, Arctic Wolf, they did offer the cybersecurity, which really made them attractive to us. At the time, we were not aware that Sharp Business Center Systems also offered a cybersecurity side of their business, and so we were able to do a lengthy demo with them on Tuesday. We came away very impressed with that. You know, so basically what they offer, they offer a SOC, which is a, or a NOC, which is a Network Operations Center, and a SOC, which is a Security Operations Center. Both of these places are staffed 24/7 with engineers that constantly are available if anything alerts on our network. So, you know, if anything happens in the middle of the night on a weekend, they get the notification, and they have the ability to get into our network and start trying to mitigate that. The cybersecurity part of the product, it's called a SIM security, information and event management. This allows them to not only monitor our desktops, so it will replace our antivirus solution we currently use. It also monitors all of our Office 365 accounts. So anything that was, you know, someone tries to log in from a foreign country, you know, those type of things are monitored and everything like that. So we feel very comfortable moving ahead with Sharp as our recommendation. We currently use Sharp Business Systems for all of our copying, printing services. They also do all of our document management, and they do all of our audiovisuals. So we're well-versed with what they offer, and we've had very good experience with them. And this is going to be, what we're recommending is doing a one-year contract renewable for a second and third year. Total cost for the first year, $216,000, and that does come out of the IT budget, and it's budgeted for next year. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Does any council, do any council members have any questions for Mr. Cunningham?
Question.
Mr. Stewart?
A couple of questions. Mark, Arctic Wolf, you mentioned it was significantly higher. What was their bid?
The total for Arctic Wolf and E-Group was $261,005.
And if you put both of them side by side, is it just a dollar which made the difference between the two, or is it --
Once we, once we found that Sharp had the cybersecurity piece, then it was very similar. You're never going to get a complete apples-to-apples match, but it's very similar in their offerings.
Yeah, I guess from my perspective is the importance of the cybersecurity, you know, $50,000 would make a whole big difference if it protects our network. And so I just wanted to kind of understand.
Yeah, we feel very comfortable that Sharp's cybersecurity offering is equal to what Arctic Wolf.
And if we're, and if we're happy with them after our first year, what is their price for year two and year three?
This would be locked in for three years. But we would, they usually offer only three-year agreements. I asked them to do a one-year just because this is a new relationship, and so they agreed to do a one-year renewable.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Loffridge, just quick. They have a 24/7 phone that you can reach, or?
Yeah, they have two operations centers, and there are always someone there, 24/7.
So they can access our computer systems at any time, anytime at all?
Absolutely, yeah. And the software actually has the ability to do some remediation whenever there's an event. So it can, if it detects a workstation that has malware or spyware or anything like that, it'll just turn the NIC off. So it disconnects it from the network immediately, and that stops the spread.
There you go.
Yeah.
Any further questions?
Make a motion that we approve the contract for $216,000 to Sharp Business Solutions.
Singer? I have a first by Mr. Stewart and a second by Mr. Newton. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
Thank you.
All right. We got you some new security, Mr. Cunningham. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Is there anything else that you would like to talk about, Mr. Strickland?
I have nothing else for you. Thank you.
All right. So make sure everybody reports back to our wonderful Mayor Terrence Roberts and let him know that I did a halfway decent job, and with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
That's the first by Mr. Newton and a second by Mr. Roberts. We stand adjourned.
You did a superb job.
No.
You did a superb job.
No.